And I'd like to welcome Chris from Cat TV's, the new man taking the other gentleman's place.
Hi.
And we will begin with citizens' comments. Is there any citizens' comments?
I was just distressed to realize that our new principal's a Redskins fan.
Oh, well.
There is a comment.
From Texas and
We can't hold it against them.
Growing up next to Dallas.
Is that conference or that division still actually playing games? They're still allowed to game in it?
But Tim, weren't you on the search committee?
Did we do the background check we talked about?
Hey, congratulations for your appointment to the select board.
Thank you.
I think that's, you'll do well on that, I'm sure. Okay, next item, treasurer's report. Everybody have a chance to look at yet? No questions, need a second? Or a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second. Thank you. Dave. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, the next, the VHI member participation agreement. Rick has asked us to table that for right now. So we will do so. The tuition agreement between North Bennington Prudential Committee and Shasberry Board of Directors. Everybody's had that in their pocket. I didn't sign anything until you people had had a chance to look at it.
Well, I mean, we've had a chance to look at it for
Right, but I wanted to make sure that you Right. Well, you see, yeah, exactly. You see the changes. You've got the, where everything has been crossed off and everything, so you see the new one here. Go ahead, Don.
I think this first one here was about your actual agreement that you have been working on for the student that is here. Is that correct? Do you have one that you signed?
I believe so. That's, is that the one from?
I don't think you've signed.
No, no.
I think that's what this is, is the actual agreement for that student.
That's right, yeah.
It's not a change in policy, it's the agreement for that student.
The policy is a little farther down your menu here.
But
Okay, so this isn't going to be across the board?
Yes, but we have, there's kind of two items here related to the tuition. One is an actual agreement for a student, and one is that you need to warn the amended policy that you have a copy of.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So, item one was the actual
Yeah, I believe so.
Student.
Do we have something to look at for item one, the actual student?
And did you, did you need input on that?
I thought everybody got a copy. Rick was supposed to send it to everybody.
That was, okay, that was the, not the 5705, then that was the
Or you can just
That was the actual agreement.
Yes, yes.
We got that a couple of days after.
Right, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
They're all set with that?
Mm-hmm. I haven't heard anything, and I asked Rick if he heard, and it should be all set.
Yes.
All right.
And it's the same as this?
It's the same as what's in the last two pages of the policy.
So I just wanted to make sure. That's why I wasn't going to sign anything until you guys had a chance to look at it and make sure it's okay with you.
So you're looking for a motion for him? Give you approval, or are you just gonna?
No, well, we basically, you've already given me permission to sign it. I just wanted to have it come back, so I really don't need a motion. We've already done that. So. But we will have to warn the policy down here when we get down below. Okay, next is the additional para professional. That's Jeff.
Yep. So, a month into the school year, I've identified a couple of areas where I think we could use another set of eyes, another set of hands. Our kindergarten does not have a general ed para right now. It's, we have one special ed para in the kindergarten. BSD, PONL, all have general ed paras. As you know, kindergarten's like herding kittens. And so, an extra set in there at times would be very helpful. We also have a number of students, as you know, our population is increasing. It's steadily increased the last few years. We have a number of students that are exhibiting some behaviors that are very unsafe at this point, and they're distracting from others' education. It's tapping me out as a resource. I've had to tap other staff members and pull them from their duties to help me with that at times because it's been a stress on the office. So, I'm taking Pat's lead from the last meeting we had. He said, if you ever need any, another set of hands, Jeff, let us know. Maybe we can do something for you. I'm looking for another para to add, a general ed para, to help in those two areas.
How, how big are those two kindergarten classes?
I think they're 16 and 17, or 17 and 18, something like that. 17 and 18.
Do you have somebody in mind to fill the position, or?
No. No, I don't have a specific person. It would take a special person. Because I'm looking for a hybrid to help me in the office and discipline, and also help kindergarten at times.
Okay, do we have anybody else here in the building that's doing that also, or is this something entirely different?
This is something entirely different.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, like I said, I employ staff from their regular duties to help me at times, or to help in kindergarten at times, to do things.
So we don't have any, is that right? We don't have any general ed paras?
No, they're all special ed paras.
Okay.
I did talk with Rick. There is some funds in, we over budgeted in health insurance this year. So there are some funds there that could possibly fund that if we decide to go that route.
So is this just going to be student oriented? It's not going to be admin help? It's just going to be, when you say help you in the office?
Yeah, I mean, there's been times when I have more than one student to deal with for safety and for distractions in the classroom. And I'm one person. We don't have the resources other schools have to deal with stuff like that, so an extra set, just to help me or to help watch a student at a certain time, would be beneficial.
And what would they be doing during the rest of the time, in the classroom?
Kindergarten would be great, yeah.
Both classes with that one person?
Yeah, we could work out schedules to stay working out with both classes, depending on times kindergarten teachers can decide what times they would need some help.
And is this something you already, you'd have to post the job for?
Yeah.
Can I just ask, since Don is here, and might have, might be able to answer the question. Are kindergarten classes in the other elementary schools in the SCU, do they typically have a second person to help? How big are they?
They're similar size, and yes, in BSD, they have general ed paras that are locally funded.
And this would be a locally funded position, there wouldn't be any 50%
No.
Match or state contribution?
And the benefit packages and all that stuff, does that go with it, or no?
Yeah, it goes into the estimate that Rick gave me, as far as the money we would need, yeah.
And so, but we're basically set on monies if we do this?
Did you have a report on that funding, or not?
An actual, no. He said, he said roughly it's between 25,000 to 30,000, going in partway through the year, probably a little less because obviously the year is already moved in. By the time we find someone, it would be a little less than that.
Can we anticipate that this would be a position that would stay with that cohort for the next six years and be part of
That class?
So if we, if we hired a person to fill the need you have right now,
Yep.
is the need going to continue on as the class matures and gets older?
That's not what I, I think kindergarten's a special breed, and they need an extra hand at times because they're, the best analogy I've heard all year is like herding kittens. And when you're trying to herd kittens, you can imagine, it's nice to have another set of eyes in there just to help out at times. Yeah, so I don't think there's somebody that would follow them throughout. It's not like the kindergarten's a special needs class this year, it's just that it's kindergarten itself.
So it's basically for this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really what I was getting at, was whether
Yeah.
whether we spend the money or are comfortable with that this year, whether, when we budget, when you sit down a month from now, two months from now, start budgeting, is this something that
We may want to look at for next year for kindergarten.
We're going to want to budget for next year too, for kindergarten?
Yeah, we may. For kindergarten, to follow these guys, this class, that's what I thought you were asking me.
Right.
Yeah, no, that was what I was asking, so that's sort of the second piece of the question.
Yep, yep.
Okay. I need a motion to, you need a motion on that, correct?
Yes, please.
Need a motion? Okay, there's a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
No others, so we will go right to the consent agenda. We have the minutes and the warrants. Have anything on the minutes of September 11?
Just a minor one on line 33. I don't think I, I don't think I drew my motion. I think it was Larry Johnson in Arlada.
Which page?
First page, line 33.
Yeah, it's got J. Johnson.
It's confusing that J.L.
Yeah, that is confusing.
It is.
Okay, so that's an L. Johnson. Sorry about that.
Don't worry.
Anybody else on the minutes? We have the warrants. If nothing else on that, we have the warrants, payer warrant number seven for $1,443.52. Number 1,005, $45,379.19. Number 1,006, $73,865.43. 2,003 is $55,177.74. Anything on those? I had one for the, 2,003, page 11, Michael Slaven. That's for $3,140, check number 200, 20034. It's just a new name, so
Mike Slaven?
Yeah.
He did some workforce with the prep work for the sidewalk.
Oh, out back here.
Yeah, he did the prep work for the drainage.
Okay, okay.
Before Boden came in.
Anyone else on the warrants? Seeing that, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
All right. All right, Dave seconded it. All in favor? All right, aye, unanimous. Okay. All right, we have the policy for warning. It's number 5705. It's a Shasberry tuition policy. And again, it says for warning, so do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. If hearing none, we'll approve the warrant. Okay. Everybody approve the warrant?
I think we're all good.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Are you good?
All in favor.
Let's keep this moving, huh?
I'm trying to. Raise your hands again. Unanimous, thank you. I wanted to make sure Richard got it.
I got it.
Okay, next, facilities. The snow removal.
We got contacted from Phil Harrington. He's no longer going to be able to remove our snow this winter. He's cutting back quite a bit, I guess, so
I thought Jay was doing it anyway.
Jay would touch up once in a while, but he's not.
Oh, okay.
Jay did offer, our average of the last five years has been roughly lower $1,700, depending on the year and how much snow we get. Most places charge either by day if they have to come, or by actual plow. Jay was offered a flat fee, no matter how much snow we get, no matter how many times he's got to plow, $1,000 for the winter. We did look at one, I think it was Mintrone.
Mintrone, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think his was like $145, $150 every time he came. So if we got snow throughout the day, it may be $300, $400 every time he came. Jay said he's here, he's right around the corner, he'll touch up, he'll hit it as much as it needs to be hit for a flat $1,000 fee. If you want me to look further, I can, or I can
Well, ask the board what they want to do. You want to put it out to bid, or you want to take Jay? I mean, it's, I don't care, either way. I mean, Jay is here, Jay has the equipment, so
That only makes sense, and the price is paid.
But I wanted to make sure, because, well, wait a minute, you're giving it to Jay, and how come you don't have someone else? So that's why I'm doing what I'm doing.
That's what we need to avoid, friend, is, I think we do need to make an effort to see if anybody else is interested up there.
Right, right.
Otherwise, it does look like that, and
Well, yeah.
we've been questioned about that in the past, so
So you're telling me that the principal should go and see what he can find?
Estimates.
Is there going to be, is there going to be a cost to doing that? I mean, how do you go about doing that? Make just a few phone calls?
I think so, yeah.
I mean, we may still take Jay.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying, but it's, you're right, it's nice to do that, so it doesn't look like
Especially in these times. I mean, we may find that there are folks out there that are looking for this kind of work, and should have the opportunity to go after it if it's, if it appeals to them. I'm surprised Jeff just doesn't go buy 24 or 30 little shovels and put this
You know.
The kindergarten.
I just think, yeah, have the kindergartens out there doing that, they'll take care of the problem.
They could play in the sand, they could play in the sand, pile.
And doesn't it fit the activity?
It could be a brain break.
Snow removal.
The snow removal day.
You could rotate among the clowns, you could all take a turn each day.
What, on a more serious note? Do we have to, where do we have to plow? What's, what's the school's, there's just the fire department's responsibility for
That's a good question.
Well, the fire department will only do to the fence out here.
Do they, and do they, I mean
And we do the entranceway coming in, this, all out back around the building, I would assume, yeah.
So I wondered, does whoever's actually plowing ours go ahead and, I mean, if the fire department hasn't done it, are they
I really haven't.
As well?
Good question.
The school bus has to get through there.
Yeah, right. That's a good question.
They probably do, I don't, Jeff can check on it.
Mike, do you want to put an ad in, like Penny Saver or anything, just to say it was publicly offered?
Well, what are we required to do for, for a
Well
You know, a dollar amount this
I think it's, what is it? It's either 5,000 or 10,000, I thought. Well, it could be 15. I know it's changed.
Put out for bid, you have to be under
It's 15, but it's just, not for a bid really, but just that it's publicly offered, if there are concerns, as Larry had mentioned.
Well, I kind of like, I guess I'm kind of partial to Shasberry residents, so, I don't know, I guess just check with people in Shasberry. I, that's my preference unless somebody else
I can call and get, call around and see, and just bring bids next board meeting, say, see the bids that we got, and you guys can stop some.
That's fine. Yep, okay. All right, next, lunch service to Sunderland Elementary.
I got a contact last week from the principal at Sunderland. They have a very small school, as you know. We did a similar thing with North Bennington last few years, not this year, because they've, they found independent. But she's asking that our abbey group supply 30, 35 lunches a day for their students. I talked with Maureen, who's the head of the abbey group here. She said that it wouldn't be much to do it. She could actually add an additional staff member to our lunch staff here. So it'd be a benefit to us. We'd have a third person here to help with lunches and stuff. The only thing that I was concerned about was insurance. They're going to have a staff member come down here, pick up the lunches. And I talked with the principal, and she said, we're all covered in that area. I can supply you with insurance information on that. But we do need board approval and principal approval if we're going to do that.
And do you approve?
I approve, yeah. Like I said, it's very similar to what we did with North Bennington, much less, it's actually less than what we did with North Bennington as far as the numbers.
It's less, Jeff?
Less numbers, yeah.
Less lunches?
Yeah.
So this, this doesn't affect, this is purely an arrangement between Sunderland and the abbey group?
Pretty much, but they need, you know, they're using our kitchen still.
Right.
You know, our, it's their staff.
Right.
But, so they need, and our school is doing the, you know, the place where the work's being done, so they need our approval.
They pass the cost of that additional staff member on to Sunderland? That's built into their charge?
Yes, yes.
That works for them? I mean, this seems like a
So, you think they'd go to Arlington?
Arlington, Arlington won't
They tried that. They tried, they tried that. Maybe they tried Manchester, too.
Did they have a reason we should know about?
Yeah.
Maureen, I talked to Maureen about it extensively, and she was, she was very positive on it. She said it would not be a big impact on us or in any way, or, you know, our service here. And like I said, she kind of related the back to North Bennington deal that we had before they went independent, so I could call her and see if you like
That seemed to work very well.
Yeah, yep. I talked to our lunch ladies, too, and they said, oh, 35 lunches, it's
Yeah, enough.
It's cake.
Okay.
There's no extra costs to us, yeah.
So you need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, Larry's motion? Dave seconded it?
He did?
Discussion. No, he can, he can.
He will, yeah.
I have the discussion. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Unanimous, okay.
When will that start, Jeff?
I'll, I'll contact Maureen tomorrow and see how soon we can get that started. She didn't give me a timeline. She said, your first step, Jeff, is go to your board and give them the information and get their approval, so
A one-year commitment at this point?
Just a school year, yes. Yeah, just a school year.
And if they chose to change that, that would be between abbey group and them?
Yeah, unless we decided to change it at some point. Yeah, yep.
Okay, next is the principal report.
Okay, before I go to the first five items, just a quick update on the pre-K. I'm still finalizing numbers with Rick and Karen. I may be asking in a week or so if we could have a quick special meeting to get some extra funds to service those 23 students I mentioned last time. That was the up 13 students we originally thought we could, we could serve. But I don't have any final numbers for you for tonight, so maybe contact me later next week if we can have a quick meeting on that. We had our open house, I believe it was last Thursday. It was well-attended. I think the highlight in my night was that there weren't a lot of parents I hadn't already met. It was kind of nice. I've already met quite a few parents already, and there was only a handful that I hadn't met already. All the teachers I talked to said it was very well-received and well-attended on their part, in their classrooms. So it was a fun night. I even got a jar of pickles, homemade pickles from a parent. They were actually very good, so it was nice. I'll come back to the safety and security, talk about some of the other fun stuff. We had, today was, three and four are kind of related. It's International Walk and Roll to School Day.
International?
International. Is that right, Tim? International?
Very fun.
And Tim Skoggins was instrumental in orchestrating another walk and ride to school. We even added the school buses this, today. So we have school bus drop-off at Howard Park and two school buses in the T and M building, so those students could also walk to school on that day. We had 136 walkers and riders today, which is over half the student body. We had a competition, Tim came up with a competition, the Easties versus the Westies. So anybody east of 7A or west of 7A, and we had a fun time tallying that up. And Tim took it over for me this morning, and it actually came out to be 68 Westies and 68 Easties.
Or is that just being an even tiebreaker?
Who was counting? Did anyone call for a recount?
So, but it was a fun time. Kids got some prizes at the end. And, you know, it's, I think it's going more and more popular. Tim's done a great job with promoting this, and I'm hoping we do it again this spring.
It's not on the calendar yet, but I expect there'll be another one in the spring.
Yeah, so, and a lot of parents helped out, and staff members alike, so that was, it was a good morning. We also had the poetry guy here last month, which turned out to be a great success. The guy was hilarious. He did a, did a presentation, assembly. And you never know what to expect with poetry. I'm not much of a poetry guy, but the guy was so funny. And he went to every classroom, two days, twice in each classroom. And the kids had a blast. My kids are still talking about it. They're writing crazy poems and stuff. He was a great success, so I want to thank you for the funds for that and bringing him here. It was a good time, and I think some of their poetry is going to be displayed around the town. Still talking with teachers about that.
Jeff, who brought the poetry guy here?
It was, I'm sorry, it was Deb Daly, our librarian.
Oh, terrific, yeah.
We have the, some elderly community members coming too
That's right.
next week to do a poetry slam with some of our kids.
Is that going to happen?
It is. My kids are the kids.
So they're going to share some poetry with some
Yeah, they are going to, they've written poetry. It's the librarian at the, at Bennington Library has organized it with Deb. And so they're going to bring adults who have written poetry and our kids who have been writing poetry, and then they're going to share what they've been doing with each other. They're really into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
And then last meeting, we had a discussion about safety and security. We, I think we narrowed it down to looking at communication between classrooms, between classrooms and the office. I was asked to get some quotes for radios, possibly getting handheld radios, possibly getting phones. And I also got a quote from Adam's Lock and Key about possibly getting a camera with a buzzer system for the front door, wanted to look at that. So, the, I talked with this guy who gave us the quotes for the radios, one side is the radios, one side is the phone, or the camera. I talked about the phones. He said, if you're looking to put phones in all the classrooms, just running the line and labor alone, you're looking at $10,000 to $15,000, just to get the phones. He recommended these radios that he's quoted on here. They're small handheld radios. They can be carried portable from anywhere, anywhere around the area. They can be set, what I liked, one feature I liked about them is they're tonable, where we have a state mandate that we have a fire drill and a lockdown drill every other month. A lockdown drill meaning that all the doors are locked, all the kids are in a safe place in their room, and the building is secure. And right now, it starts that, is I get on the loudspeaker and say, we are now having a lockdown drill, or the school is now locked down. These radios are capable of doing a tone, where I could send a tone out to all the, all the classrooms. They hear the tone, they know to lock their doors, get their kids in a safe place. It's not over the loudspeaker, saying that the school's in lockdown. I like that feature a lot. I like the feature that they're portable also, because the teachers can take them out to recess. If they go outside in the middle of the day for something else, they can take them and they have contact with the office. So, I think it was 2,300 for the, for the radios, 2,351 for the radios. And then the camera system with the lap retention and all that was looking at just under $3,000 from Adam's Lock and Key for that system, if we were to look at that.
What is the radius of the radios?
He didn't give me exact, but it's quite a ways.
Is it?
It's quite a ways. I mean, I have a simple radio that'll go a couple of miles.
Yeah.
And these, I think these are a little more high-tech.
And would there be any interference with the fire department, their radios?
No, maybe in a different channel. And actually, these can have more than one channel, so if, similar with having some schools, Jay could carry a radio with him, and I could have him on a different channel, I could always contact him through a different channel that wouldn't interrupt the rest of the building, if I wanted to contact him for something.
So Jay would be two?
Yeah, and the rest of the school would be on one. And we would only use one for, obviously, for emergencies. We wouldn't use it for daily communications necessarily, because we like to keep it for emergency. And you continue using daily communication, we could use the intercom system. Because I don't want people talking on the radio, obviously, in the middle of the day
Right.
when classes are going on. There shouldn't be that many conversations there, for the whole school to hear.
Okay, you don't need a motion on this tonight, do you?
Nope, you asked me to come back with some
Right.
recommendations and some quotes, so
How many channels do they have, this model?
He didn't give me the exact number of channels, but he said it was definitely more than one. Most radios that I've seen have had multiple, you know, up to 10 I've seen at the middle school we had.
Jeff, can you share, if you've had any chance to talk to the staff, teachers about the radio idea specifically, how they felt about that?
They, yes. They like to have some kind of communication besides the intercom system. You know, there was no leaning one way or the other. They like to have some kind of, besides going to the front of the room in front of the door, and turning a key to talk on the intercom system, they like to have some other way to talk to the office.
So that was the issue, I know you mentioned it last time, was the current system requires you to walk up right to the door where they, where they are
Exposed.
Now, in retrospect, poorly looked placed, right?
And I will say, we had, I will add to a couple of things. One, we, we had our first lockdown drill last Friday, I believe it was. It was Friday before. It went, and we sent a letter home to parents letting them know, because we knew that would kind of be stressful for some kids. It went extremely well. Every classroom I walked into, the kids were so quiet, they were in a safe area. It went, it went really, really well for our first one. I think, I don't think, I think it's the first one we've had in quite a while here. And like I said, the state now requires us to have one every other month.
Wow, really?
Yeah, so we have to alternate. It used to be a fire drill every month.
Yeah.
Now they're requiring a fire drill, then a lockdown, then a fire drill, then a lockdown. And we, I think we are planning on having a full evacuation drill at some point this year also, just to get the kids aware of that. Which the radios again will come in handy there. If we go to the church, I think the range would be, would be, would be doable there.
Jeff, you said there was a key. Right now, you have to use a key to
Yeah, isn't there, is there a key to use the intercom, or no?
It's just a Yeah, it lives in the
It's already in, it's in there.
It's, yeah, it's like
It's in there, you just got to turn it.
It's like the silent gunner key.
Skeleton key that just twists one
Skeleton key that just twists one way or the other.
I think there's a thing, it's even like attached with like a string. And they're up high enough so nobody can, you know, borrow them.
No, they're theirs.
Well, yeah, that's true, I do live in the short end.
Uh, one, I would just, if I may speak to the radios.
Yes, yeah.
They are really nice to have a mobile device that you can take out on the playground or wherever you are as the teacher to have a, a method of communication with the office and with the administration. Cause accidents happen at, uh, the swing set, you know, and then you have a radio out there where you can or, you know, a parent comes to pick up a child and they wanna know where, where's your class, they can radio somebody, so the mobile aspect is very helpful. Um, you, you might wanna check into, uh, including something, uh, and, and obviously will cost you more, this is a pretty reasonable price. But, um, to include the buses with it, because it's really nice to be able to, um, contact the buses and with you have unneeded communication.
We've had pretty good luck with just calling, um, Defour real quick and he gets on the radio with them.
He does his radio, so.
Yeah, yeah, we had to do that today, cause it was a cold buzzer ring, and I had Colleen call the, call Defour and he got right on the radio from the, you can hear on the phone saying, you guys on your way, and I go, yeah, we're in room. So they're pretty good, they're pretty good at that.
As long as you have that connection.
Yeah. Radio?
Yeah, the buses.
To the buses?
Just to have it for Solomon's.
I don't think she does.
Oh, maybe not.
That's probably, maybe it was their radios.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and they might help you out too, because she might need a different base station to contact.
Fran, just before you move off this, and I don't know wh- whether the board had feeling about it or not, but I think Tim last month also raised the possibility of, um, installing whatever would need to be installed so that cell phones could work in the building, if, if they don't work now. I guess the assumption was they don't work now, but
They don't.
By putting in a repeater or something that might be more expensive or might be less expensive, um, would allow you to communicate with people anyway using their cell phones. That might not be as practical as having radios, but, um, it might be less expensive too.
I think that o- opens up a whole can of worms though for kids who have cell phones that are sitting in class.
And the thing with the cell phones is there'd be, there might be five different teachers calling our office from their cell phones in, during an emergency situation, which would, we, we can't, you know, that kind of load at this time.
So you thought about that?
Larry?
Well, I like the idea of, uh, using Adam's local business, but he's also a resident of Shasberry, the owner of the company. And we've had extremely good luck with, uh, him, um, service throughout the town for other, other systems that he's involved in. So, I think, yeah, that's, that's a good move.
The wa- the radios aren't coming from Adam's?
No, no, no. Just the camera and the buzzer system.
Well, something to think about, and we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I, I thank Jeff for doing that, it's, it's informative.
When will we make the decision?
Uh, probably at the next meeting. And, uh, I just wanna digest that, I think it's, uh, obviously the radios is a better deal than the phones. I mean, if you had the phones, you'd, the teacher would have to come, like you say, to the door or some, in that area.
The phones are just very expensive.
Yeah.
That's the main, the main thing with the phones is it's very expensive, yeah, it's a little more private, but
Yeah.
Looking at a lot of labor and a lot of cost.
I don't think that's something we wanna get into, okay. All right. Superintendent Treeport, you're up then.
I just wanted to mention that we are having a visit, uh, with our, uh, Agency of Education representative, Debbie LaShure's coming. She's gonna visit with you on the Wednesday, the sixteenth. Uh, she's gonna be here to work with, uh, Principal Johnson and the staff on selecting indicators for their school improvement plan, which, um, will include working on math instruction, uh, but not only math instruction, everybody needs to look at, uh, ways to move forward and assessment plans and um, how to work with improving performance for all students, so. She's, um, here and we also, um, will have some service in the district from, from a coach who will help us. She really wouldn't be assigned to your school, but I'm sure that, um, somewhere along the line, we will try to pair up, um, some of your staff and, and you with some other schools that are working on similar plans so that we can work together to facilitate that.
To, to update on where we're at, we, we have a Green Mountain Star team here at school, it's six other teachers and myself that have been spending Wednesday morning together, um, looking at indicators that we need to choose from for our plan. And then we're gonna make a plan around those indicators for our school improvement plan this year. Um, I think this, this week we'll finish up that first part of selecting indicators, Debbie will come next week and help us out as far as making the plan from there.
And then that's due November sixth, is that correct?
November sixth, the rough draft's due to, uh, to Catherine.
What's the name of the committee?
Green Mountain Star, which is the, the online program that we're working, it's all, it's all online.
Okay, all set now? Okay. My report, I had the, uh, class size and Larry had some other questions and some other people have asked me of the numbers of students to accept. I realizing you've said tonight, we're, we're kinda full in the kindergarten area and, and things anyway. And we're wondering about the other classes and what do, what do we do if we have an influx for the sake of argument, ten, fifteen kids? That are Shasberry residents, or let's say the, the people that, uh, cause we've got the tuition policy and tuition agreement and all that stuff. Which way do we go on that? He was principal, it depends on, I, I think it depends on the grade.
Depends on the grade, where, where the kids fall.
And what is the, the optimum class size, what is the state, oh, good, you did do that, excellent.
This is that chart that we've, we've seen many times.
Seen many times, yeah.
Yes, um.
Yes, we have.
So it's, it's fewer than twenty for K three and fewer than twenty-five for four-six. That's what you're asking me.
That's the policy.
That's the, that's the, it's both school quality standards and, um, S V S U policy.
Is there a new question from this, is that, or you're just?
Well, you want, we basically wanna know what the state average was. And, I mean, it's, S V S U policy, we didn't know if it was more than twenty-five or twenty-nine or twenty, twenty-seven, I don't know.
Yeah.
I didn't, I couldn't answer that question, so. But it says here, four to six, fewer than twenty-five, K three, fewer than twenty.
So, we're obviously within the policy.
Mm-hmm.
In all cases. We're a little bit under for kindergartners. So we could, we could have a total of thirty-nine kindergartners, we have thirty-five.
Uh, like grade four through six, again, I'll use that scenario, we have ten kids come in for the sake of argument.
Hopefully fourth graders.
Yeah, yeah. Um, what would we do then, I mean, if the, uh, numbers were so close, would that mean that we'd do another class?
That, that, I mean, that's potentially, I think you'd have to look at class dynamics.
Okay.
And you have to look at, there's a lot of factors there.
Yeah.
You have to look at, if you're gonna s- make another class for, say, fifth grade, where there's only one class right now, um, two classes of fifteen, I mean, that, that makes sense, but are you gonna have two classes of twelve? Or, uh, you know, I think you have to look at the numbers, there's a lot of factors that involve there and, um, that's something we, we'd have to discuss if we dig that huge influx.
Yeah.
I would hope that wouldn't happen all in one week.
I don't think so.
The bus is coming.
The bus is coming, yeah, the bus. I know there's a, I know there's a set of triplets out there somewhere that Pat's, Pat's got his, his eye on, but, um, but right now our numbers are very good and very, and, and they're solid, and like I said before, the population is continually increasing. Um, and they come to a day when we have to start exploring, maybe opening another class and the numbers get really big. I don't know of a magic number that would say we'd create another class for that. A lot of it really does depend on class dynamics, there's some classes that I could tell you could go over that number and they'd be okay. You know, if the teacher's strong, the class is strong, there's other classes where I'd say I'd like to have a few less kids in there.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But just to be clear here, on the, so the third grade class has two, two classrooms of twenty.
Yep.
So that's forty, which is, that is the, I mean, the, the policy says your average fewer than twenty. So we're already, we're already over that, we don't have fewer than twenty, we have twenty.
Yeah.
So, does the policy say, this is a guideline, or is the policy, this is what, this is what we need, we have to do?
Guideline.
It's a guideline.
And so are the school quality standards, the recommendation and guidelines, they're not verbatim saying you have to
Okay.
Take any steps if they go over.
Is there a solid number out there, Jeff, that we, that state says you can't go beyond this? Is there a maximum cap?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
It's a school-based decision.
Okay, and the policy that we're showing here is a recommendation?
And I just would add, it, it gets hard around twenty-five, that's what the number that really, because it's, well, that's a big class, but if you split it, you really, you'll, you have two very small classes, so you have to, you know, it's always a judgment call about when you're going to add another class. But we were conscious of that, Jeff and I, when we talked about the numbers in the policy, our, uh, our K to three fifteen, this is for the tuition policy and K, four to six, twenty, so that it leaves a little room for influx of Shasberry resident students. We were cautious about that, making those thresholds lower.
Anything else, Larry?
No, not at this time, Frank.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Sitting now, and on Monday night, uh, Dave, Larry and I attended the V S P A meeting at the C D C. And it, basically, we talked about health insurance. And I came away just as confused as I was before I went there, so it makes no difference.
Well, Donna was there too.
Oh, that, sorry, Donna was there too.
I can help you with the notes.
And, uh, but it's basically the whole meeting was about the health insurance and what's coming down the pike and why we have to do this and, and I and, and we talked a little bit about negotiating, negotiating in the upcoming contract, so it oughta be an interesting year, I say.
Now, does this have anything to do with what's happening in Washington as far as, you know, Obamacare and coverage in Vermont?
Yeah, yeah, that's all part of it, absolutely.
So how is that going to affect our budget and how, are we tabling this for when Rick is here?
Yes, I, I want him to go over this very, be art- very articulate about it because, so we can understand it uh, in layman's terms here, but I'll, I'll tell ya, it's, uh, it scares you when you start going over the numbers and stuff and, and I, I don't know what we're gonna do, but we'll see.
And, and I think that we, that part of the hard part is that we do not know the answers yet.
Right.
It's very fluid in the, how is it going to be applied? What will it mean to schools of different sizes, and part of it is the determination, is it a small or large school or? Uh, and the big difficulty for us is that our contract for the teachers, well, all of our, and for the parents are a com- a combined contract for the schools and districts of all sizes. So it, determining the size of the school and when those rules have to be applied is very tricky because our contract then would mean, well, now is Shasberry gonna decide by June? And the rest of the schools won't have to decide until the following year, it's, uh, there are just still a lot of questions unanswered.
Yeah, what I was wondering is, you know, we have less than fifty employees here. So I didn't know if we were gonna fall into a different category, or are they gonna put all the S, the whole S V S U?
That's the question.
Which is now we're, now we're well over fifty employees.
Yes.
So I didn't know if they're gonna do it separately.
Yeah, my understanding of that was we're, we are, as a district, uh, a small employer by definition.
Right.
And the fact that we're part of the S U is not the critical point, it's that
That's right.
We're, we are the hiring entity.
Yeah.
But it's a challenge in terms of
So we're a small employer.
Right, in terms of negotiations.
But because we have a, because we have a collective agreement.
Right, that's where the, it gets tricky.
But, uh, I, I think that there's an opportunity for us as a small employer during the next round of negotiations to include uh, provision for, not just us, because there are, there's other districts too that are small. And that would give, um, it would open up ultimately down the road more opportunity for employees, give them more options that might be more beneficial and, and be good for everybody.
Yeah. Well, that's all I had, is there any other from anybody? Seeing none, our next meeting date is November thirteenth. There's the budget status report included in there.
Could I make another?
Yes, you can.
Um, would it, would it be possible to make it six-thirty? Is it silly to start changing times again, but?
It's up to the board.
Cause it's, I, I'm driving really fast to get here.
Ooh, we don't want that, we don't want that.
I don't have a problem with six-thirty, I, what's everybody's pleasure.
I'm okay with almost any time.
Okay.
Sorry guys.
I was thinking four o'clock would be good.
Well, if you didn't want her here, just tell her that.
Yeah, just tell me.
No, I, I don't have a prob- six-thirty's fine, it's
I'll pay back, Jeff.
Pay back for what? I'm always very nice to you.
Six-thirty?
So six-thirty?
Richard, I think it's six-thirty from now on, okay?
Is that right?
If that will be okay, and we used to meet at seven, so this, it's still early.
Yeah.
And went to ten.
So that's, oh, geez, no, that's okay.
And look at your timeframe, look at, look at how they're doing for you.
Well, listen, I'm kinda embarrassed, I, I was gonna try to six-thirty, but, oh, wow.
You started waiting too.
You're embarrassed.
Yeah, I know, well, okay, you give me five minutes, good. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay, second, Dave seconded, or Jen, take your pick.
Jen.
All in favor, I. Thank you.